All right.
Is D cat on?
Yeah.
Usually.
Owen, are you okay? Can you give me a thumbs up in the chat, Owen, if you are ready to go, ready to broadcast live? Owen's microphone is broken. So, yep, he said all set.
Okay, good. How do we know we're live?
I think we're good now.
Oh, we are good live. Okay. Good evening, Danvers. Welcome to this virtual school committee meeting. First, I'd like to start off with Danvers. I'll start off with the mission statement. Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. And, you know, if you do plan them, well, it's being recorded anyway, so we won't talk about the proceedings. Just another note that all votes during the virtual call will be via roll call. And to kick off the meeting, I just have to jump back into the Zoom. All right, give me a second to get to the agenda. So many screens, so little time. Okay, call to order mission statement. First up, I'd like to start with items of interest from the superintendent to the school committee.
Yes, Chair Lopes, we have a very exciting next week will be our new staff orientation on August 23rd. We have a number of teachers coming in, staff, support staff. It's gonna be a great day and you're coming in to help greet in the morning to Mr. Lopes. And then as a reminder, our first day for for staff is Wednesday, August 28th. So everything's around the corner. We've been working really hard to prepare for the opening of school.
Thanks for that and working on my computer here trying to bounce back and forth between screens. Next up, additional information and should we go to directly to item A, a special education update from Christina?
As you like, Chair. Yes, I'm happy to put this on and actually put together a few slides if that's okay to share the screen.
Absolutely.
All right, I will guide that through. And Christina Ryan, our new director of student services has come aboard and she will just give really an update for her work and her team's work from July 1, really earlier than that. Until now. So this is really an overview. We're going to bring back more information in September, but just wanted to give a quick update here. Okay, should go to share. Perfect. Everybody see that? Okay. Awesome. All right, Christina, take it away.
All right. Do you mind moving to the next slide? Thanks. So we are in the midst of a special education audit and those findings will be shared soon and then we will certainly bring them to your attention. This summer, we had the privilege of having our three new staff members join us. We have Derek Munyon, who was our assistant director of student services at the elementary level and Marla De La Cruz, who is our assistant director at the secondary level. We also have a new out of district coordinator who is Angelique DeCoste. Next slide, please. The new IEP is going to be debuting in Danvers this fall. In preparation for that, we have trained eighty-five educators through a series of three sessions that were held in person between June and July. We also partnered with CPAC to host a parent training night, which was recorded and occurred on August 5th, in case anyone would like to watch. Part of our big work is going to really be focusing on program development. This is something that was very important to not only our families as well as our staff members. Part of this work is really going to be to vertically align our in district specialized programs to make sure that we have a clear continuum of services as well as entrance and exit criteria for all of our programs, starting with preschool. And really thinking about how we're going to build on this work for the next few years. In order to do this, we've partnered with two different groups to really help lead this work. One being Constellation's Behavioral Services, which is doing a mini audit of our learning centers pre K through five to really make sure that we have all of the components mentioned above. And really help us thoughtfully plan about as kids are transitioning to middle school, what that needs to look like to ensure that we have the correct program in place and that staffing is consistent with our needs. We are also continuing our partnership with Landmark Outreach, who has worked with us for several years and conducts school-based consultations for our language-based programs. This year, we are beginning in grade three at Great Oak, so we really wanted to make sure that we hit the ground running. We have also hired Caitlin Monahan, who is going to lead our listening and spoken language program. In a previous presentation that was called the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, we have since changed the name because the goal really is to have our students be listening and using spoken language. She is working on a service transition. So what that's going to look like for this year is really as well as planning for program growth and expansion. Our CPAC is also hard at work, planning their events calendar for the upcoming year, and they are leading a resource fair, which is going to be at the beginning of October with more details to come. Mr. Bauer, I don't know if you wanted to share any updates about the program moves because I know there's a lot of construction happening.
There certainly is. I'm happy to share that. And one last thing on CPAC too. They reached out just the other day that they finalized their strategic plan this summer and they are actually coming to our school committee meeting in September. We'll be able to share that lots of details in the plan and feedback from parents in the community. So that's outstanding. In terms of the program moves, a lot of construction Riverside is preparing for the movement of all of our pre K to take place in that building. I have to give a shout out to the DPW. They've done a great job in terms of preparing the courtyard. They've really cleaned it up and that will be the area where the pre K students will spend the recess time. Also, the DPW, they're in the midst of constructing two new bathrooms, which will help. So they're working on that and that'll be ready by the start of school and and they've been really cooperative to make this transition happen. In terms of what's happening at Smith and the movement of our learning centers, the summer was great. So the extended school year program took place at Smith and the programs were running right out of the classrooms that they'll run this fall. And that that was a great transition for our students and for our staff and for our families to to make that transition into a new building and such. And certainly the other part too is, you know, working on TLC program at Thorpe. We're working on that with Principal Riley as well. And that's in the development phase and we'll be ready to go in in September when our students return. So it's been a lot of work this summer, but certainly a great deal of cooperation again with the DPW to help make these moves. And they actually started early by moving our teachers' stuff into the move, the assigned spaces. We have quite a bit of movement to accommodate this and we'll be ready to go and our staff's ready and certainly we look forward to welcome our students into the new spaces in the fall. So that's really it for the the moves. And certainly, this is it at the end of Christina's section. So I don't know if the committee has any questions for Christine or myself.
I just have one. Yeah, Mr. Chair, if okay with you, sir. Christina, thanks for the update. The the quick question that I have is just about around the audit that you mentioned in the first slide. Can you tell me a little bit about who's conducting the audit? Is it internal, external? And what are we, what's that process like?
Sure. This is something that Mr. Bauer actually started prior to my arrival. So, Mr. Bauer, do you want to start? And I'm happy to add in any details.
Absolutely. So we actually consulting with Rebus and Associates and outside group, we have two former superintendents that have extensive experience in special education as well as other programming. So they've led a series of interviews with a number of stakeholders, CPAC, the CPAC Board, they were part of the interviews, teachers, staff, administrators. They've been reviewing our financial documents, our special education numbers. And they're going through the whole program of our student services. And we actually had a meeting with them about a week ago to review a preliminary draft and we were going to meet with them probably later this week to there were more revisions coming into that. They actually started reviewing all of our PD for our for our student services staff. So it's really a comprehensive audit and the outcome will be, they actually will come to school committee and present probably probably October. But they also, we're going to look for ways to launch it into our stakeholders as well to share with our stakeholders that will will be able to review the recommendations. They'll have a number of recommendations, which we fully expect. Really more concerned with that than accommodations because we're really looking to build the programs as well. So it's been very extensive. And certainly they've done a lot of follow-up interviews, follow-up meetings. And we're looking forward to the presentation of the final results. Again, more than likely, the October school committee meeting. I don't know, Christine, if I left anything out.
No, I would agree with that. I think when they write the recommendations, they write them in such a way that it's going to be very easy to speak to those and really think about how we want to use this information to map out our next steps as far as budgeting and really what our priorities are going to be for the department.
Right. The timing, the timing is going to be perfect as we, you know, we finishing the first phase of our, you know, three-year program to improve special education and and we've done quite a bit of work this year, but it's in the transitional piece, taking the audit will help build that up because they'll review everything from personnel, budgetary, transportation, out of district placements, everything. And this will be timely information.
Great. Chairman, if I could. I just, oh, sorry. Just a quick question I had in regards to and specifically to special education and staffing, how are we doing with that? And are we on on track to be ready on day one?
So I'll talk about that in the next part, but certainly we are on track. A lot of our programs, again, it was exciting for us because as we made our presentation, we did hire a number of positions for improvement of the program through ESER funding and we knew that we weren't be able to carry that over. So we've done the shifting over into our operating budget for our learning centers. And we're working right now, the big piece of closing the gap is finalizing our instructional assistance, which we're known as teacher aides. And that's not, that's not atypical this time of year to be wrapping up those pieces as well as we're moving into the final phases of the year.
Thank you for that. Eric Crane?
Yeah, the is pretty much the same question, actually. Maybe a slightly different angle. Is the is the staffing impacting your ability at all right now to to execute, you think, on day one, the plans as as you've planned them out for the year?
To be very direct, we feel we're in a good place to start the year on track for running our programs and making sure that they're they're staffed appropriately to meet the needs of our students. And certainly, it's very exciting. I could talk about this too. We've been working with the teacher, the instructional assistants and behavior texts to put together some professional development for the start of the year. It's very exciting. We have not had that truly organized before, but we have the organize now and we're very happy with that. So and again, I think hats off to Christine and her team because they've been closing the loop on a lot of areas that, you know, we have needs and making sure that we're able to match match what is needed for the start of the school year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Problem. Any other questions? Okay, on to personal updates. Dr. Bauer?
Yes, sir. That's right. So just very quickly, as I, as I mentioned before, it's very fluid this time of year. One of the things that we're doing, I did want to bring this up, is we're reviewing everything. We're going through an internal personnel audit, which is not unusual. The practice that I'm accustomed to is basically lining everything up with every building to ensure that everything is accounted for where it should be. I have to give a lot of credit to Pam Crum and Kim Bevins. Pam Crum, our business manager. And Kim Bevan, our human resource manager, they've been working together, they're meeting now with our principals. They're meeting with our support staff to ensure not only our teachers, everything's lined up. Because we do go through a lot of internal moves as we end the school year, right? We may have a teacher and we did have a number of teachers move buildings with our with our new program. So we just want to ensure that everything is in line and ready to go and they're doing that process. So really a lot of credit to them. The new hires, this is a lot of the stem from the spring on to to actually, I spoke to Kim today, just finalizing things. So we hired, we've hired thirty-six. These are not necessarily just new out of the budget, but these are either replacements for people who've retired, who've resigned, who've moved on. But we also have some of the program growth that we've had, we've moved over as well. So we've brought in six administrators, obviously Christina's team, the student services, the Great Oak principal, and then the new assistant principal, HRMS. That was all done really before for July 1. As Christina said, we brought our coordinator aboard of Listening and Spoken Language Program and twenty-two teachers, that's across the district. And some of those new hires are long-term subs due to leaves, personal leaves, leave of absence for the year, new librarian at HRMS. We've had to hire two school psychologists due to leaves at the end of the year. And we've hired an SLP replacement as well. We've hired nine instructional assistants. So we've done a lot of work and I'm very proud of our principals and our support team and Kim Bevan and her office, really a lot of coordination. We do the interviews and go through the process accordingly. The current search right now, we have twenty twenty positions that we're looking to close the loop. Nine have offers, we're waiting for the paperwork. We have eleven right now unfilled. But those are a variety of positions that we are in the process of either going through interviews. And we've had a couple of last minute resignations just recently that, and that's not atypical again, going into a the school year. As things do change and situations may change for our employees, whether it be a personal reason to move on or relocation and things like that. So you know, and certainly we're, I think we're in a pretty good place. So including the hall monitor, I could talk about that in transition with our high school. We're looking to add that position and we had some savings that we can reallocate to bring aboard another hall monitor to help out through their transition as well. So in terms of the DHS principal update, I do have a little bit of an update. As you know, we're working on our our planning for next year. It will be an interim principal. We're looking very closely at our inside administrative team at the high school. We're very fortunate with a very strong administrative team. We know that the timing coming into the school year beings that we start school in, you know, less than a month. We want to make sure that we have a great opening of school, that our staff, they're supported and ready to go as well as when we open the doors for our students. The day after Labor Day, we're ready to roll. It's a big year for all of our seniors or juniors, sophomores and freshmen. So I feel very good about where we're moving right now. And and once I have more specifics, I will bring that aboard and I'm hoping to have those within the next couple of days to have that ready to go as I put out my communication. So I have to give a lot of credit to our high school team. They've done a great job in terms of working for the transition and also Principal Federico, who's done a really nice job through his transition. And certainly it shows his professionalism as he is moving on, but he's also working very closely with the team, Mary Wormers and myself as we're breaking down and working to make sure that we have a smooth transition. Once we're able to to finalize the specific plan. Well, that is it for our personal updates. And also I will bring to you, school committee, a more detailed update as a start of the year that includes the personnel. So I do feel very confident that we're we closing the loop. I'm involved with the the final interviews. And the last couple of weeks have been a whirlwind to close the loop. And I know although I'm away this week, I'm available by Zoom to close that out. So we're working really hard on that. So that's personnel updates. And I also did with this slide in here, just as a reminder that, you know, our ESER and special education positions that we've, you know, the town is so graciously helped support us and with the avid advocacy of our school committee moving these and there was quite a bit of positions that we've moved over and we're very pleased and very happy that we've made these moves and it's just going to strengthen our programming that much more. Everything from our instructional technician at the high school, our reading specialist. The opportunity room will continue and our special education coordinator, as you know, we did a reconfiguration of the three coordinators into two assistant directors. And that was work that was done already. They were already there. It was just moving it over to our our budget, which is great. And then also our program development. Now, you know, we have the two BCBAs that we've added. So we've added recently a social worker at Highlands. We did have the third social worker we've added HRMS, which was last spring, will carry over. Our special education teachers, we've added, we've increased the point five SLP to one point O at Great Oak. Because we are, as Christina said, we are adding that cohort of our language-based program, which is critical for our our program growth. And that SOP will help and we reallocated a teacher at Great Oak to be the teacher of the language base. So that goes hand in hand with that. Our technicians, instructional assistants. And also through Christina's work, we did, her analysis showed that we really needed to add to our point eight school psychologist to move that to a one point O due to the case sizes and the demands that are on our school psychologist. So we have room to do that within our budget, just with reallocations and our hiring. So that is a bonus too. So our hats off. Again, a lot of this work was done in the spring. Now it's just finalized into our operating budget, again, with the change from the point eight school psychologist to one point O and moving along. So that's it for personnel. Again, I'll give a more detailed update in September.
Mr. Chairman? Just briefly, and I hope that we'll have a chance to say a proper goodbye to Adam at some point in the future. But just for the moment, really sad to hear of him leaving and yet very happy that he's taking the next step in his professional life. He'll do a great job in his new role. And he, the passion that he brought to his work here made a tremendous difference in how the high school and the atmosphere at the high school developed over the last several years. And also, I know, Mary, you would say that he was such a help as your sort of right hand during the year that you served as our interim superintendent. So he has really left a mark on the district and just wanted to say how much we appreciate him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I believe you may be on mute.
Twenty twenty-four never fails. No, I I echo everything you just said, Mr. Crane. And I know that those are going to be big shoes to fill, but I'm confident in the team that we have there to to really step up and just continue all the work that's already been done. But we'll be, we'll be watching that closely. Any other questions or comments?
If if the committee has exhausted their questions, Chair, I do have one thing I'd like to add.
Go for it.
Yes, and I would like to say, you know, I know there will be a time to talk a little bit more about Adam and our appreciation and gratitude and just from personal standpoint, my first year superintendent hugely helpful in transition because not only did he bring the transition to the high school and improve the school culture there, but his footprint was was very wide. I know he supported Mary in a number of different ways. He supported myself as well with DPW, school safety, transportation. He did a lot of other things too. We brought aboard a new athletic director and just did great work all throughout the time. So on a personal level, and I do appreciate his professionalism throughout this whole process too. There were no surprises on our end. When everything went public, then we made the announcements. And again, he's working diligently to ensure that the team will be ready to go in September. So just wanted to give that little bit of a shout out as well.
Awesome. Okay, if no other questions, on to other unfinished business and toss it back to you. I couldn't, I couldn't Dr. Bauer yet. I can't remember. That's official.
Not yet.
Almost, almost. Okay, Mr. Bauer.
We're getting there. So actually, at this time, we you, we did put the HRMS program of studies across for a first reading back before we adjourn for the summer. We'd like to, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the HRMS program of studies for a second reading. And Ellen Furek, our quick and record, HRMS is available in case there are any questions.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, let's roll call Janet.
Gabe Lopes.
You should allow for some discussion if we need it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry. Sorry. Discussion? Mary, none. Okay, roll call, please.
Gabe Lopes.
Approved.
Sean Dougherty.
Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, unfinished business. The second item is school committee twenty twenty-four, twenty-five meeting dates. I'm not sure if that's final and if we should vote on that today. I know there's some dialogue around second meetings.
If if I could share.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes, my my recommendation was, I just wanted this on the agenda to discuss. We did, I did submit a draft to you.
Okay.
Just so publicly, if there's any comments and then certainly can bring this back into the September meeting if there's any revisions or anything like that. And certainly took the feedback from the retreat to galvanize into the the in-person meetings. And then also to configure and add the subcommittees as well to add the budget subcommittee. And as well as separate the curriculum assessment and equity committee, separate the equity piece off that. And as it rolled through the policy and curriculum and assessment committees, subcommittees would meet three times and and those are slated to be virtual. They don't have to be, but that's how it was listed. And then the budget meetings for the committee, I tried to sandwich those around our budget workshop to have one of those meetings before the budget workshop. Then have one before the budget hearing. So then that way we could vet all that out as we bring it forward. I thought that was excellent feedback from our retreat. And then the equity, just being able to, that would only be able to run twice. But but again, this is all for discussion, whatever at the will of the committee. There were a couple of dates that were challenging for the subcommittee, so they couldn't fall on money due to holidays. So I thought this would be a great opportunity for any discussion. And I'm happy to share them on the screen if you'd like to, sir.
Yeah, good. Let's put them up because I think one of the items that we talked about were, you know, just creating a more efficient meeting that specifically focused on the goals of the district. So just for the public sake, when you, when you look at the agenda, not only would you see agenda items, but the specific goals or or key initiatives that that specific item is set to address. Another component was, you know, being more conscious of time, especially with student presentations in regards to getting them in and now, you know, early, you know, and not having them wait, you know, for a while. But this one actually looks okay, except it's April twenty eighth, that Monday after spring break.
More than likely, yes. Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Unless someone's going to be doing some kind of extended break, everyone should be back. So we should have we should have no, no issues with that.
And also, you know, if you want to have the meeting, the subcommittee meetings in person or virtual, that the virtual is set up because we had the two meetings and then that was the third meeting at times. And also that start times at five fifteen to that ran in conjunction, we had the two meetings per month. So all that certainly whatever the committee would like to do.
Right. I mean, the the only obstacle for me would be October twenty first, because I do know I may be traveling internationally. But we can address that as we get closer. It'd be something I'd at a minimum want to participate in in person, but we we'd have a quorum. So you wouldn't need me. Budget workshop should be fine. Anyone have any, any, anything on the calendar, jump out? Or it's something we can review and be ready for in the next meeting?
No, so just on the right-hand side of the, the right-hand side is just subcommittee meetings, correct?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just double checked. I looked at it earlier today, but I just double checked on the calendar. It doesn't look like there's any holidays or in the past, you've run into some, you things have been scheduled on like a three-day weekend on Monday. Everything looks great.
Very cool.
The the November fourth was, it's the first Monday of the month due to Veterans Day falling on the following Monday.
Yep. I don't like it.
If there's any, any feedback, Chair Lopes, please let me know. I'm happy to make whatever adjustments work.
Yep, definitely, definitely. Okay, can we move on to new business?
Yes.
All right, back to you, Mr. Bauer.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will share the screen and maybe move through here first. So we're now in handbook season as we are getting ready to open the doors and our principals and their assistant principals and directors have been working really hard to in the handbook, as we know, is a is a living, it's it's a document that it it's just one that evolves over time. So every year, there's a lot of time spent on edits, revisions, and what we're bringing forth, both handbooks, the high school and the middle school are in in the folder. And I'll recommend each for a first reading, but before I get there, I did put together a few slides because we really want to discuss or any of the true substantive changes or any specific questions that the committee may have. So one second, I will share my screen and I will go back to the slides. To the slides. And. So just very simply, so the. The handbooks mostly are edits and revisions. Um and and as we take feedback from our staff, our administrative teams and our our school councils. Uh we bring that forth, and again, most of the updates this year are substantive. We do review them by council. We did last year for the first time in a while, and we wanted to repeat it again this year because there are changes to Title Nine. Uh the the legis- uh regulations they've changed since October first. And just to, if there's any other legal items, so uh the the middle school and the high school handbooks have come back. And you know, from the middle school standpoint, there really are minor changes. It's really this updating language. In areas that just do not apply, and again, feedback from the school council, which is important to make it user-friendly for families and students. Um and really just some of the operational changes that were brought about last year, uh they'll be reflected in the handbook, so. There's nothing substantive, any major policy changes. Um again, the new Title Nine updates really. Will fall in and there'll be stock, and I'll review that more in in September, uh because this has been evolving, but uh reality. Um the middle school handbook itself um is mostly just revisions and updates and such, so. I make a recommendation for the school committee to approve for a first reading, the Holton Richmond handbook, student handbook.
So moved.
Make a motion?
Second.
I put a second. Thank you. Any discussion on the? Thank you. Am I, can you guys hear me?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, uh any discussion on the handbook?
None.
All right. Janet, please the roll call.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Sean Dougherty.
Yes.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Gabe Lobes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thanks to Ellen Fierich for being on in case there are any questions and. Uh we'll bring back for the, for the final, the second reading in September. Um and for the high school. We have uh Carrie LeBlanc is joining us because there is a substantive change in the high school handbook, and that is our attendance policy, so her. Uh Mister Hamilton, uh Miss DeMaro and Principal Federico, as well as the faculty in in. Miss LeBlanc gives some feedback to that, but worked really, really diligently on the attendance policy. I reviewed it. They sent a copy. Before we brought it to you tonight, we reviewed it, and certainly they've thought a lot about this, uh very thoughtful in terms of the operation, so. If you'd like, I could certainly have a Miss LeBlanc. I know she's on. If you'd like her to walk you through the attendance policy, if you like, or whatever you wish.
I'd actually like that, if that's okay, Kelly.
Sure, Gabe. Um so the policy is being adjusted from the present version. Um rather than tabulating absences by semester, we're gonna, we're hoping to do it quarterly. Um resulting in any student that has five or uh, I'm sorry, has more than five unexcused absences. Will result in an FA, which stands for Failure Due to Attendance. Um however, that's not set in stone, so students can change that letter grade. Um if they're able to provide documentation for their absences, or if they improve their attendance the following quarter. Um if there's a reason that there needs to be an attendance appeal, where their parent can come in or guardian and talk through what's been going on, why they've been missing class. Or school um and or completing a restorative attendance program for the final quarter of a course. So the hope is that if a student receives an FA, that they. Um complete some steps to turn that grade back into a passing grade. Um and if not, if they're not able to do it that quarter, then they have the opportunity to show improvement the following quarter and change the grade back.
Does this um, is it okay to ask a question?
Yes, of course.
This, yeah, yeah, I'm just, I didn't know if you were finished or not. Is attendance also tracked at the class level?
Yes.
Okay.
So this will, this really, we're really honing in on class skips. Um and or students leaving school early um or being dismissed early. In addition to daily attendance.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Have we had a uh, I trust that this is uh an increasing concern over the last few years, the sort of chronic absenteeism?
Absolutely. I mean, after COVID, um you know, there was a lot of leeway given, right? And then last year, we really started to get back into the groove of being in school and, you know, if even if you're not feeling well. Can you make it through the day kinda thing, but we really need to start putting some um accountability on. On everybody, right, on students, on families, on teachers, on administrators, to really try and improve our, our student attendance.
I read through the policy and and uh it seemed. The conditions and the accountability piece and the responsibility seemed very clear.
Yes.
So I think parents who uh read this and try and comply with it. Or need to comply with it, should be able to understand uh the way it works. And the other thing is. I I'm sure that you hope, and I know that we hope, that if there is an issue at home, that is leading to. Uh difficulties or a student accumulating absences. Um we hope certainly that the family will reach out, that the parents will, will, you know, sort of be ahead of the problem. Come talk to your principal, talk to uh social worker, talk to psychol, talk to whoever you need to talk to. To uh begin to get ahead of the problem and uh, you know, then it won't get to that point where you're looking at. A great issue at the end of the quarter, so we certainly encourage, I would certainly encourage people to know that um. Our administration is there to help and do anything we can to encourage success, and I'm sure you would, you'd say that too, Karen.
Right, absolutely. I mean, I think, again, it's, it can't just be on us, it can't just be on parents, it can't just be on students, we all have to work together. So I think, you know, being able to communicate, share the information as to why students are absent. Allows us to kinda get a handle on what's going on and how to provide support and intervention to reduce the number of absences. And that's really the goal of this, is to reduce the number of absences, so students can be successful in school.
Yeah, Mister Chair, just a a quick question for Carrie also. I the, and and I think this is great, because we did see that. You know, through that presentation throughout the year, that there was a lot of that chronic absences and um. I mean, the numbers were were pretty astonishing, but accountability piece on this, as far as like having the students sign, the parents sign, and make sure that. This is clearly communicated and 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 people are, you know, they know that this is a big change, because I'm sure if somebody gets an FA. You know, they're gonna be horrified at first, but is there, is there a way that we can clearly communicate it and kinda say, hey, look, you signed this thing?
Absolutely. So I think our plan um that we've been talking about is how to promote this right at the beginning of school, having it be a separate. Um document that we send out, really kind of laying out exactly what it means. Um and then again, you know, I'll, I'll say that, you know, we're not looking to punish, right? Um we're, we're looking to hold, hold people accountable, so if that comes up where a student does receive an FA. They, and the parents saying, wha- what is this, right? They're able to call myself or Mister Hamilton. And we'll come in and have a meeting and figure out how to, how to resolve the issue, right? So, you know, there is those kinda safety nets being built in to support the students and the families on this change.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I I do have one more. I was looking at the, the staff. Do we no longer, do we still have a truancy person in the building? No?
No, un- unfortunately, uh Chair Lobes, we were not able to move that over to Esser, unfortunately.
Okay. Is that a big loss or or you guys have plan B?
Well, we certainly, um you know, in anticipating this was happening, we've been working with the administrative teams of both schools. In terms of, you know, coverage and making sure that uh they're able to, and that was actually discussed way before the policy was brought forth. Um and how to navigate that, so. Yeah.
And and ju- just to add, Gabe, um you know, I think um this policy allows for notifying parents. When students are getting, starting to get more absences, so you know, that's something that even last year, when we did have. A truancy uh person, attendance person, that wasn't um, it didn't happen automatically. And now we're able to do that, so I think, you know, there may be moments where, you know, myself or Mister Hamilton or Miss LaRocque. May need to step in and kind of um, you know, hold kids accountable to truancy, but for the most part, there are a lot of things being put in place to prevent that from happening.
Excellent.
Question uh to, to the chair, to uh Superintendent Bauer, Miss LeBlanc. Do we have a mechanism in place for those families that may. Be in a situation outside normal truancy? There might be something going to, like, I wouldn't put anything more on your plate, like. Having staff do home visits, although that does happen in in other districts, um or with the school resource officer. But it is um possible that we might run into certain situations like that. Do, will we have anything in place where we can maybe get to the bottom of such an issue?
So I can, I mean, if it's okay with you, Dan, um you know, I can speak from my experience this past year. You know, myself, along with our uh guidance team, whether it be school counselors or social workers. We really have a very good pulse on students' attendance and why kids are missing school. Um and there have been times where we have gone out to the home with, you know, two adults trying to get that student into the building. And provide that support. Unfortunately, you know, there have been a couple of cases this year where it did have to go, where we did have to file a CRA. But really, we try and use that as a last resort. Um but we, I will say, we do have a, I I can speak for the high school. We do have a really good pulse on. Um the, the chronic absence students and the reasoning behind that, and we try and provide the support to. Reduce the absent, absenteeism.
Thank you.
Sure.
If I could, uh Mister Chair, just um having, having experience sitting in um and bringing a tennis policy forth in my previous. Position and knowing the work that takes upfront, you know, um as I reviewed the policy with the administrative team. They have the safeguards in place, all the questions you ask are are a hundred percent right on the money. Because it's not about, ah, gotcha. It's all about trying to cut off a problem before it occurs. So that piece of communication at the beginning is so critical, so that everybody fully understands, because there are cases where students just cannot. Come to school, whether it be a medical, whether it be legal or 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 bereavement, whatever it may be, that doesn't count against them, so. That documentation has to be accurate, and in addition, when you find out those cases that are just really uh are struggling, it's hard, but also the notification in advance. So that if there's an issue, they can be corrected. There could be some documentation that was missed. But at the end of the day, there's always the opportunity to say that it falls through and the student doesn't make it, that they have, they still have chances for this. We. So they can still recover the credits, and that, that to me is a huge piece of this. So I think they did a really nice job putting this together, but I think all those questions asked are, are very timely, for sure.
Any other questions? Okay, can I get a roll call for the Danvers High School Student Handbook for first reading, Janet?
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Sean Dougherty.
Yes.
Gabe Cap, uh Gabe Lobes.
Gabe Kepnis? Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Thank you, Janet. Um. Okay, uh special comments online. See, I I I think should we uh move past that, Mister Bauer?
Yes, a recommendation is there's one piece of the policy that I'll bring forth in September to bring this all in an umbrella. So if we can move this to September, I appreciate it.
Okay, we can go to item D for new business.
So the recommendation for the approval of twenty twenty four, twenty five list of accounts and maximum balances.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the singing room, if you please, a roll call.
Sean Dougherty.
Yes.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Gabe Lobes.
Yes. Okay, um moving on to order of business, Mister Secretary.
I move that we approve and release the minutes from the June twenty fourth regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gabe Lobes.
Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Sean Dougherty.
Yes.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Okay, so that passes, um consent agenda, motion to approve the out-of-state field trip and homeschool applications. Can I get a motion on that, or should I just give the motion? That's so, well, I, I propose a motion to. I I I put forth a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip and homeschool application. Mike Shannon, so moved. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
Just one quick question, one quick question for the superintendent, real quick. Have we seen an increase in uh homeschool applications this year? Or is it about the same, Dan?
It seems to be uh uh about the same, pretty, pretty steady. Um ebbs and flows, but it seems to be pretty steady from last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, roll call.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Sean Dougherty.
Yes.
Gabe Lobes.
Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Okay, do we have anything from communications, NEC?
Uh the, the first meeting will be in September, um so really nothing to report, except the renovations are going full steam ahead. Uh to update the HVAC there.
Awesome. Uh legislation, Mister Crane, do you typically cover that?
The uh budget, the budget passed, um and the legislature went into uh. Um they're out of session, session ended, I think last week. They left some business undone. There were no surprises education-wise, but the um, they left business undone and may come back for a special session. There's some talk about that, but um nothing at the moment for us to be concerned with.
Okay, I have a quick question. Um the impact of the um, the billionaire tax, the, was there any? Have you heard of any like positive impact or additional funding available because of that?
I don't know, and maybe someone else. I don't know that it's going to directly impact education, although. It's supposed to be used certainly to help fund the education piece, but um I don't think it will result in, for example. If the budget says X, I don't think that they're gonna take money from the billionaire's tax that comes in this year and increase the budget. But long-term, it certainly could, and it could certainly um free up some funding for other things too, so. I think there will be an impact long-term, but probably not like a bump in the budget that's already been voted.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you for that. Um subcommittees, I know we're, we're finalizing, you know, the liaisons and the updates, and I know a lot of these committees are in uh. Are enjoying the summer, but I don't know if any of the subcommittees listed have any updates for the call today. I didn't think so. Yeah, everyone's on, on break and we'll probably get back at it in September. Um. Before we, do we, did someone drop, or do we just reshuffle the deck? Uh Carrie, uh Carrie left. Okay, all right. I didn't know, I lost any school committee members.
Sorry, I said no. You did a great job, so she's on her way.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. Okay, um with that, that, that is our full agenda. I would like to propose that we adjourn. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right, good night, Danvers. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Oh, the vote, let's vote, let's vote to close, please.
Gabe Lobes.
Sorry, Janet.
That's okay.
Yes.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Sean Dougherty.
Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
All right, good night, Danvers. Thank you all. Good night.
Night.